I am laughing, that is the funniest thing I've ever seen in my life. Dying.
Oh no, I didn't see.
There are always the four, four tenets.
It's still good. That's the funniest thing I've ever seen in my life.
Robert's on the VIP list, he's got the advanced copy.
I was actually looking for myself.
Do you need one? I have pen.
I have one. You have one.
You need one?
I'm good with here.
Thank you. Please note there are emergency evacuation exits to either side in the back. I believe, Mr. Gavin, we have a student that would like to address the board.
We do, so we'd like to open up the mic for any students that wish to address the board.
Actually, you're gonna go down on that side over there, sorry.
Hello, everybody.
Hello. Hi.
The other day, I was told a story from my friend. We were talking about all the changes that have been made to this Southside High School pretty recently. And I was defending the changes, really. And he tells me this story at this club. I'll get back to this story in a minute. Firstly, my name is Michael Boe. I'm a senior here at Southside High School. And the reason I'm speaking here today is because I've had, I guess, some concerns about recent changes. And I'm one of few kids who both know about the Board of Education meetings, know where to find the time for a Board of Education meeting, and have been experiencing the policies from the child's perspective. And I think that's kind of important for a reason that I'm going to clarify soon. So these changes have included one entrance waiting exit to the school, hall passes for the halls, and then now we have line yards. So that way our ID is visible at all times. These changes are mildly inconvenient. And they get kind of the resistance that you'd expect from a bunch of kids. But ultimately, they aren't a very big problem. And ultimately, they do have a positive effect on the school, I think. They increase safety, and I am grateful for that, actually. Now, my real issue comes with the bathroom. And that's what my friend was telling me about. And that was, he was taking a number two in the bathroom, and he was asked to leave, or from outside the bathroom, because he was taking too long. Now, to my knowledge, the limit in the bathroom is two kids at a time, and that there is some kind of limit on how long they can be in the bathroom. This limit's looking about five minutes. So the idea is that, from what I can tell from my perspective, the idea is that they don't want children wasting too much time in the bathroom. But I disagree with the idea of being time at the bathroom, at least at this time limit. First of all, the physical need, which is what a fellow student was going through, which is almost such a trivial problem for an 18-year-old to have, to not have enough time in the bathroom to be able to do what he needs to do. But at large with the bathroom, my problem is a component that's a little harder to see from the adult's perspective. I talked to a trusted teacher in the school about it, and it's a little, much of a harder angle to see, and that's like the mental component. The bathroom doesn't really come off as a place for, like, mental health by any means, but it is useful to have a place of privacy, a place where if you're just not having a good day, you can just leave the classroom for just a few minutes so you can, like, cool down if you're not having a good day, which we do to a variety of reasons. And when I brought this up, the idea that comes back at me is to go to the school's mental health resources, which are definitely there. But often, that's too big of an ask, too much for what a high schooler could be going through. It could be as simple as a breakup. And that might cause someone to be going through a little bit of mental distress, and maybe all they need is just, you know, a few minutes in the bathroom so they can clear their head before going back to school. And the idea that, before going back to class, and the idea that it's being timed is, kind of puts another pressure on it that's kind of unnecessary. I think the right to some privacy, the right to, like, some dignity, where you're able to just escape the classroom, escape just being in the whole school environment for just a few minutes of the eight-hour day, or six-hour, it's really useful for kids. And that's a little bit of a harder thing to see if you're not a student yourself, to understand the objective of it. But as a student that's speaking here today, because I have seen it from the child's perspective and know enough to be here, I will highly recommend changing these bathroom rules. They're not good for the kids, both physically, they're too much, and mentally, it's kind of retracting another option for students. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I had the opportunity to meet with Michael out in the hallway, and he told me what he was gonna say tonight. And, you know, we're always trying, like I told you outside, we're always trying to balance the needs between security and making sure that we have good procedures in place. And I really appreciate the maturity and the wisdom that you showed in terms of coming here, voicing your opinion in a public place, which is exactly what you're supposed to be doing. This is the forum for trying to make change, so well done. We talked about, you know, I will make sure that I speak and follow up with Dr. Walsh and our security guards about the time in the bathroom and trying to make sure that we allow for privacy. We're always trying to balance between if the child isn't there for a very long time, are they trying to avoid something as opposed to just looking for a five-minute break or a 10-minute break kind of thing? So that will be a discussion that we have. I appreciate you bringing the voice. And as I told you outside, I'll tell Dr. Walsh to seek you out tomorrow to come up with a plausible solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Gavin, recognition of staff?
We do have a very special recognition of staff today. Last week, many of you know, there was an accident, a car accident on the corner of Lakeview Avenue across the chief from Watson. A car went out of control and hit the rail and went up against a telephone pole. Two of our employees, Mr. Scalisi and Mr. Bookman, who also happen to be two volunteer firefighters, happened to be working at Watson that morning. Both jumped in right away. There was no hesitation. Both men jumped in to get the man out of the car and noticed that the gentleman was not breathing. They initiated CPR and called 911. They were able to resuscitate the gentleman who was taken away from the hospital. For this, we really commend our students, both Ray and John, for the work that they have done. We found out later that the man passed away, not that day, later on, but had the opportunity to say goodbye to his family. And so we are so thankful to both Ray and John for their actions on behalf of someone else. We are so thankful that they had the training and compassion, and we wanted them to know that they are greatly appreciated here in the Rockville Center School District, and we thank them each and every day for all they do. Thank you. We'll come around.
Thank you.
One more. One's going in the paper.
John and Ray, thank you. On behalf of the Board of Education, thank you so much for your heroic efforts. Any correspondence that can be posted has been posted. Mr. Gavin, superintendent's report?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank all of our teachers and principals for the work they do every day on behalf of our students. This week, we celebrated both principals and teacher recognition day. And I'm so grateful to be part of a team where we have so many dedicated and talented group of people that work to enhance the talents of our students. We also had Urantown, the play here at the high school, at Southside High School, the set design, the orchestra pit on stage, and of course, the performances of our students were simply amazing. Great job, and kudos go to Ms. Sideman and the whole cast and crew for putting everything together. I, for those of you that are theater buffs, we are looking forward to Shrek Jr., which takes place tomorrow at the middle school at 4:30, and again on Saturday at 7:30 PM. The kids and teachers have been working really hard to prepare. We also celebrated RVC's first all-district art show, and we nearly caused a traffic jam in the center of Rockville Center. The art show was a great success. 250 people all came out at 5 o'clock to come see the artwork, to see all of the great work displayed by all of our artists at the Rockville Center Public Library. Kudos to our art teachers and Dr. Zuhar for taking the time to set up such a wonderful exhibit of so many different students' work. This is something that we're doing for the first time this year, and I can tell you based on the fact that we had so many people there, we'll be doing this again. I want to thank Mayor Murray Deputy Mayor Baxley and our village and library trustees for partnering us on this event. And thank you to Ms. Overton, Ms. Fink, and Ms. Marino, and Ms. Marino, for their cooperation and partnership. They are the directors and staff at the RVC Library. They did a great job, and they were so excited to have 250 people all come in at the same time. They might have been a little bit overwhelmed. I'm not gonna lie, they might have been a little bit overwhelmed, but they were definitely very happy on bringing everyone in. The other thing that, spring has sprung, and it is definitely concert season. We started off with the Wilson Show Monday night. Our third, fourth, and fifth grade students were involved. I will say this, our third graders did a really cool version of the recorder and crocodile rock, which I didn't think, I didn't know how they were gonna be able to pull it off, but they really did. More coming in the next few weeks. I think next week, we start with the middle school concerts, and then we will flow into the other elementaries and the high school. Secondary Parent University was also a great success. Thank you to the principals and teachers for putting it together, and for, to Dr. Moriarty, Ms. Billig, Ms. Flanagan, and Ms. Celebrity for helping to make sure that everything, all the trains ran on time for that event. I want to remind our parents and teachers that we also have our inaugural TED Ed events coming up from May 17 through May 24. All of our schools will be conducting with students, conducting a TED Ed, which is basically allowing students to research an idea that's passionate for them. And they get to research it and then come up and do a short speech to a large group of people, which, as you know, public speaking is one of the things that people are most afraid of. And I'm super excited to see how our kids tackle the fear that's common to everyone and get out there and enjoy their ideas worth spreading. We also have, oh boy, superintendent and cabinet for the day. We have several students that were part of the successful auction. And Thursday, May 25, I would like to tell the board that we have a new cabinet, we will have new cabinets and a new superintendent coming to make sure that we are doing a full day of fun activities, which include, don't tell anyone yet, but, which will include a full tour of all of our buildings, lunch, and they're going to get a project to do. So it's going to be a busy, busy day for our cabinet. Regents review. I wanted to clarify a few emails we had this morning regarding a tweet from the middle school about Regents review. The tweet captured an in-school activity that took place during the school day. There were pictures of students in the gym preparing for Regents. So I just wanted to clarify a few things. First, that day during the school day, the sixth and seventh graders were currently involved with the New York State Math Test. So as they were involved with the New York State Math Test, many of the typical rooms that our eighth graders might have been used were used for testing to make sure we had separate accommodations and make sure that all of our students had the appropriate testing conditions. As such, the eighth-grade teachers use the time to give our students the opportunity to practice Regents-level questions, both independently and collaboratively in the gymnasium. They spent about 45 minutes on algebra and 45 minutes on earth science. The activity, again, took place in the gym due to the fact that most of the classrooms were used for a separate location for the sixth and seventh grade testing. The second question that we have heard is that we had a question about whether or not students were turned away during Regents review. To clarify, we did have more students show up for an after-school review class than we anticipated, than had signed up even. The room for algebra was too small, and the students that did not fit in the class went to the earth science review instead. We addressed this in two separate ways. First, we called the parents and told them the students that even if they had come in on Monday, they were allowed to come back today, which they did. We also moved that class to a larger room, we moved it to the library. And we made sure that we are canvassing our staff now to add more teachers to the after-school review process. The flip side happens at the high school. So at the high school, we currently have classes with 15 to 25 people enrolled. And with our high school students' busy schedules, sometimes we only get three or four. So we're trying to make sure our classes are balanced, we're trying to provide a pragmatic approach, and make sure that all of our students have the options that they need that fits their schedule. So I just wanted to provide that as clarity. So that's my report, Madam President.
Thank you. And next up, we have our budget hearing. Mr. Gavin?
Mr. Bartels, you're on.
Okay, thank you. So this is our formal budget hearing. This is a hearings required by the state. Last meeting, we had our preliminary budget hearing. That was the last chance we could have to make any changes. So this is really just a pro forma. So I was just gonna have a very short presentation, just kind of go over the summary of the numbers and the information on the budget. So we are at the end of our budget schedule. We started early. Principals and administrators start back in October, putting together, working with teachers and staff to put together a budget. We go through the entire process, and we end up here with a final budget. And then in a couple of weeks, we'll have the annual election and budget vote. To summarize the budget, we are at a 5.74% increase, which is a little on the higher side, but it is actually on the lower side of the Long Island School District budget increases. So for this year, for whatever reason, all districts are seeing increases in this range. A lot of it has to do with health insurance and utilities and things like that, which much higher increases this year than in the past. Our tax levy is at 1.99%. That is under our tax cap. Our tax cap this year is at 2.21%. Again, that, a lot of times you hear a tax cap is a 2% tax cap. That's just the rate of inflation maximum. It goes into a more convoluted formula with some additions and subtractions based on different revenues and expenditures. So our cap this year is 2.21. We are well under that at 1.99%. We are using $2.5 million from our fund balance, from our reserves, for capital projects. We do have a big increase in capital projects this year. The main ones being the Southside Middle School roof, which is duly in need of replacement, and also to put in a turf field at the middle school. There are also facility improvements for all of our buildings in the district. We have no program cuts for next year. Any changes that will be made will be made based on enrollments. We have expanded offerings both in-school and after-school, including the addition of additional sports teams. Many of them at the middle school and a JV volleyball team at the high school. We have additional support for programs like DECA, coding classes, robotics, and we have new laser engravers, which we also heard at the last meeting that some of our tech teachers are really excited about. We are going to be maintaining all of our staffing and support for programs that were previously funded by COVID. Over the last few years, we've had additional funding from COVID, and we don't want to lose that. The learning loss didn't magically disappear, that is still there. So we are gonna continue programs like our after-school programs, Wizards, continuing to assist with the funding of Regents review and additional support staff. We are expanding the co-teaching model, integrated co-teaching, to the secondary level. It's been a great success at the elementary school. We are expanding that to the secondary. We've built in additional allocations for security to try to increase that. We're constantly trying to upgrade our security in all of our buildings. And our budget document and all of the detail and all the presentations are available on the district website. And then just finally, the information on the budget. It will be Tuesday, May 16, voting from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM here at Southside High School in the main gymnasium. Our Board of Education trustee election, there'll be two seats, which will be filled at large. If people are not registered to vote, they can still do so. Has to be at the district office, and they can do that through May 11. Absentee ballots must be received by the district clerk by 5:00 PM on Tuesday, May 16. And also on the ballot will be the Rockville Center Public Library budget and one library board seat also to be filled. Summary.
Thank you, Sarah.
Questions?
Any questions from the board?
The public will have to ask questions.
Not at this time, Mr. Greenfield, no.
No, not on budget.
Not at this time. Okay. Next item for information.
We are pleased tonight to report back on one of our board goals, which was the establishment of the MTSS support system for the district. That was one of the goals that the district decided at the beginning of the year. And I would ask Ms. Love and Dr. Moriarty to introduce the team, the professional team we have sitting in the audience that are gonna lead us through the presentation. Who's going first, Dr. Moriarty, you or Ms. Love?
Ms. Love.
Ms. Love, it's on your show.
So thank you so much. Before we begin our presentation, I'd just like to do a little visualizing with everyone, if you would entertain me. I need you to imagine a garden, a garden of flowers. If I could ask this of you, please do not visualize, though, a garden of flowers that are uniform in color and in height. I need you to imagine a different kind of garden. Picture in your mind a garden of flowers moving in the gentle breeze, flowers that are of different heights and with many colors, red, yellow, orange, purple. Imagine a garden of wildflowers. Our students are very much like this garden. When we teach our children, we do not teach to a one-size-fits-all approach. The magic in teaching happens when we formulate our instruction to meet the needs of all of our children with their multiple intelligences and interests. Multi-tiered support is how we prescribe instruction to meet the needs of every learner sitting in front of us, to grow our gardens like wildflowers. This is where we find the most success and our students find their happiest educational journey. And here we go. So this year, with that in mind, we congregated a group of educators, administrators, and worked together to analyze our current response to intervention program and ask ourselves, how can we take what we're already doing and develop it further to meet the needs of all of our students so that we're teaching broadly to the standards, but individualizing for those beautiful flowers in our garden? Together, we worked throughout the school year meeting multiple times, as I mentioned, teachers and administrators working together to come up with a plan that we could use moving forward to take us to the next level. And that's what we are presenting to you tonight, a plan to help grow and nurture our garden of wildflowers.
So this evening, you'll hear about our process as a committee, and we engaged in an extensive process that included research and where we analyzed our current RTI plan for our strengths, as well as our areas of needing.
To make sure it's on.
Yeah.
It is on.
Sure. Our strengths, as well as our areas that we can consider as opportunities for growth, for our continual improvement and growth. You will also hear about our immediate action steps, as well as our long-term action steps that we would like to take into next year and into the future. So much like we heard from our last presentation with the computer science, robotics, and computer-assisted design, you will hear about our backwards design that we engaged in. Again, looking at our outcomes, and we determined that as a team, our analysis and our evaluation of our current program, as well as our plan for the shifts. So part of our process began with partnering with Branching Minds. Branching Minds is a leader in the area of multi-tiered system of support and infrastructure design. And we partnered with them so they could help guide us through our entire process. We established this partnership, and they, in turn, helped us establish a collaborative problem-solving team that is our committee. And we have members of our committee here today to help present our findings, as well as our work. That infrastructure analysis looked at our current RTI plan. We compared that to our, their tool that is grounded in what are the most effective components for MTSS and MTSS framework. And that was six components. And we looked through our entire plan. And you're gonna hear tonight our strengths that are grounded in the hard work that this district has gone through for years, as well as what would be our next logical implementation steps and phases. And so now I'm gonna turn it over to the team, and they're going to explain the rest of it for you.
Thank you, Dr. Moriarty. MTSS is a system to proactively support students' learning and growth. In prior years, Rockville Center utilizes the Response to Intervention Program, or RTI Plan. This was a system that provided academic support for students who struggled. MTSS support, sorry. MTSS incorporates many of the positive aspects of RTI, but also takes a broader approach to meet the needs of the whole child and provide more comprehensive framework. MTSS bolsters strong core foundation of instruction for all students and provides strategic support when needed, featuring tiered leveled supports, which could include academic, socio-emotional, and behavioral supports and interventions. Here on the slide, we see a graphic with three tiers. The green represents our core instruction that all the students receive, instruction like math, ELA, science, social studies, socio-emotional learning that students receive in their classroom every day. In orange, we see our tier two, where we provide strategic support for students who may be struggling. This research-based support is done in small groups within the classroom and can be provided by the classroom teacher or an interventionist. And these interventions are fluid and often shore up skill deficits. At the top, in red, we see our tier three, which is a more intensive intervention for students who are not showing sufficient growth in the tier-two model. We targeted students, goals are created, and research-based interventions are used along with progress monitoring and data collection to track student progress. Our support teams use assessment data plus input from parents and teachers to analyze and evaluate our student growth and implement necessary levels of support to help students reach their full potential. At its core, MTSS will provide strong, universal foundation for all of our learners and layers of support to help students grow. Here, we see a visual of a tree with tiers representing each layer of support. Just as a tree needs strong roots and a strong foundation to grow, our students require a robust system of support to reach their full potential. At the base of the tree, we have tier one, that represents the universal core instructional support that all of our students will receive. As we move up the tree, we see the strategic support for our tier-two learners. And all the way up to the top of the tree, where we have our tier three, where students who require intensive support can receive individualized interventions. Tier-three interventions may involve more intensive one-to-one support, specialized assessments, and targeted interventions designed to address specific learning or behavioral needs of our students. The chart that I just showed you shows that all of our students will receive tier one, that's 100% of the students. But somewhere around 10% to 15% of our students would require tier-two interventions and support. And at the top, in red, we see about 5% to 10% of our students would require the intensive tier-three support. And here, we see the MTSS cycle, where we are instructing students, assessing their growth, analyzing data, evaluating our support options, and providing interventions for students in a cycle. Teams meet, collaborate, and come up with an approach for the students with the whole child in mind. child in mind.
Core One instruction, referred to as Tier One instruction, consists of instructional strategies for all students. It provides access to our core curriculum based on the student's readiness skills, interests, and strengths. So you may be asking, what is Core Instruction? Let's use foundations as an example. This standard-based core literacy curriculum scaffolds learning while explicitly and systematically teaching all skills. Foundation lessons actively engage learners through the use of multisensory techniques, where we can proactively promote positive student behaviors. We need to ask ourselves, as part of a grade level and school-wide data teams, how are we evaluating our core instructions? Once again, I can use foundations as a good example. At the end of each unit, there is an assessment. We ask ourselves, is our core instruction meeting the needs of 80% of our learners? 80% of our learners must master the unit before moving to the next. If 80% of our class is not, as a team, we look for patterns and trends to see what is going on. We ask, is it the content? Is it the delivery? Is it the pacing? As part of a grade level and school-wide team, we aim to ensure that our core instruction meets all the learner's needs. So this year, as we create the MTSS framework, we evaluated our Tier One instructions. Here at Rockville Center, we have many strengths. Our universal screener, NWEA, benchmarking, foundations, K to Two, math curriculum and unit assessments, to name just a few. And just as we see strengths, we see opportunity for growth. Our immediate action steps began with aligning assessments across the district, creating data sheets and analyzing this data. We embarked in many professional learning opportunities through instructional coaching and workshops focusing on team teaching, flexible grouping, and differentiation. We aligned instruction based on the science of reading and the deliberate practice of foundational and comprehensive strategies. Some of our long-term steps, we determined, are first to create ELA unit assessments. Next, to develop grade-level data analysis teams for ongoing evaluation of our core. We will also continue to alignment with the five pillars of literacy, the science of reading, mathematical principles, and a knowledge of content-based curriculum. Here are just a few pictures of our research and learning in action. As you can see, our grade-level teams are analyzing data, as well as professional learning opportunities based on research, through coaching and modeling to ensure that our core is aligned and cohesive with rigor and relevance for all of our students.
So what is Tier Two instruction, and how is that compared to Tier One or our core instruction? There are, these are the students that are, what we would say, at risk or possibly not reaching the grade-level standards or expectations, and it's a very small subset of the learners. On average, it's about 10% to 15% of each grade level. These learners often need more information presented to them differently in order to be successful. So for example, they might need more time, they might need scaffolding questions or tasks, they might need more assistance, or because they're not doing them independently on their own. In addition to the core instruction, they receive about 60 to 90 minutes per cycle, six-day cycle, on top of the core instruction. And this support is more implicit to what they need to help them be successful. The instruction can happen in small groups, it can be through team teaching, parallel teaching, where you have two teachers teaching the same lesson, but it's presented to the students a little bit differently. It can happen through station teaching, where every group is working on something independently. This model allows for more differentiated instruction, and the big advantage to this is that all of the students benefit from it because of the reduced teacher-to-student ratio.
Okay, so that's what Tier Two is, so how are we going to do this? So here's how we're going to do it. We're going to have grade-level teams at each building. These teams will meet typically once a month to discuss the Tier Two process and the students. So first, the teams will be made up of the classroom teacher, the reading teacher, math support person, the building principal, and any other staff that is needed. First, we have to identify the students. So we do this by talking about the students. How are they performing in the classroom? Looking at their assessment scores, classroom assessments, NWEA. Once we've identified the student, then we need to create a plan, an intervention plan, where we set goals for the students. And typically, Tier Two students have similar needs, and so we can group them, and we can service them together. So this goal is then known to all who are servicing the child, and we start the implementation of the goal with instruction in the classroom, which can be done by the classroom teacher or the reading or math teacher, as a push-in model. As we are instructing, we are progress monitoring along the way to make sure that they are working toward their goals. And if they are, great, we keep going. But if not, we need to look at that, we need to analyze that as a team and figure out why, what's going on, why aren't they progressing, and we probably need to adjust the plan, and we do so as a team. So if you look at the next slide, this is just a summary of Tier Two. So we have our team, we developed a goal, we're always asking ourselves, what does the learner need to learn? The instruction begins, how are we going to get them there? And we progress monitor along the way, and how will we know the learner got there? And that's the progress monitoring.
And the strengths that we've had over, you know, the several years in Rockville Center through our TR model is that we have our AAS support teachers. This year, we actually have them in every single building, so that is a big bonus for us, where in the past, we did not have that, we would have to rotate through buildings. We have our team meetings, which has been happening for a very long time. We have our benchmarking and our foundations unit assessments, our math unit assessments are across all the buildings, and we all, we have program-specific progress monitoring. This year, what we have really implemented is that we've been experimenting with the team teach approach of pushing in during a Tier Two model for those learners, where in the past, it's kind of been in the classroom, out of the classroom, and we're really trying to push for that in-support class where none of the students have to leave the room. The kids love that, sometimes they do like to leave the room, just to escape for a little bit, but it's okay. So we've been pushing that more into the classroom, and the other students are really benefiting from that as well. We have created, or trying to create some goals, and we're definitely working on towards that, and having progress monitoring tools to help us better assess the learners. And our professional development and learning this year has been really focusing on team teaching, how we can work together to give our students the best instruction that they can get. Our long-term action plan for Tier Two, or for all of the students, is the master schedule and the change in that schedule. The principals have been working very hard on this to allow fluidity throughout the five schools, to have the Tier Two instruction within the classroom, and then we get to Tier Three instruction that will be outside the classroom. So that's a big task, and we always say like, good luck to that. The other long-term thing is on data analysis, and we continually do this over and over again, to identify those goals, to have that team teach approach, and that each teacher who is in that classroom is responsible for those goals. So that's something that we will continue to work on throughout the next upcoming years. And one of the next professional developments that we'll have is focusing on crafting goals so that each student can receive the best instruction that they need and find the programs or instruction that we have to provide for them. And here are some pictures in the classroom, where we are having collaboration with the teachers. You see students working in small groups, where teachers are split within the classroom, some station teaching and parallel teaching that we've been implementing this year, and you'll really see the difference in some of the students love a lot of the collaboration. It's been very nice to see. Now we're going to move to...
Good evening. So what happens to those students who are in need of additional support in addition to Tier Two, we shift into Tier Three. Tier Three instruction is an intensive support that is very individualized. Goals and plans are created for students receiving Tier Three at this time. I love to quote Dr. Moriarty when she talks about that. They're very specific targeted lessons in the areas of reading and/or math. We're using normed, normed-referenced progress monitoring tools that I'll talk a little bit about more, and this intervention is provided by a specialist, whether it's a reading teacher like myself, or a math support teacher like Mrs. Benino, Mrs. Gutman. As Mr. Duffy mentioned, this is generally provided to 5% to 10% of our learners. It is not instead of, but in addition to the core instruction and Tier Two support. It typically encompasses about 120 to 135 minutes of instruction per cycle, and is traditionally in a pull-out model. The teaching is much more explicit, targeted, and using research-based programs and/or strategies. So how do we identify those Tier Three students? Again, we're always looking at data, formal and informal, those universal screeners of NWEA, those progress monitors. And one of the things we do is we meet as an instructional support team, which we've always had here in Rockville Center to discuss students in need of Tier Three intervention, but we're going to make some shifts next year that I'll talk about. The instructional support team consists of a team chair, classroom teachers, reading intervention teachers, math specialists, principals, psychologists, social worker, any other specialists in the building. So what do we do? We identify what is the need of this child, this child has, what's the root cause, what's getting in the way of their learning. We create a SMART goal, which is, let me just make sure I say it correctly, it's a specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound goal. And I'll talk a little bit about that through progress monitoring. We implement the support, we progress monitor, we interpret the data, and make adjustments to the plan for that child based on that information. Moving forward, next year, the instructional support team will have built into the calendar to meet much more frequently on our students receiving Tier Three at that moment in time to ensure that we're doing everything we can do at the building level for that child to meet with success. So I'm excited for that shift that we're going to make. And just like the Tier Two overview, here's another nice overview of Tier Three. We have goals, we instruct, we progress monitor, and we make adjustments as needed. Progress monitoring. As Tier Two, we progress monitor our students to make sure that the intervention is working and our children are making gains. This year, I was lucky enough to be able to test out some more norm-referenced progress monitoring tools that are new to our district. We've always monitored students' progress more with teacher-created monitoring tools and other tools that weren't necessarily norm-referenced, but these norm-referenced tools will give us these percentiles that are nationally normed, which will be very telling, again, to see our children reaching their goals. And they will be very scheduled and hold us accountable as interventionists to make sure we are monitoring. Here are just some visuals. The Branching Minds platform, as Dr. Moriarty talked about, will give us the capability of charting data and really looking closely at the trends that we see. So on the left-hand side, we can see a student who is making sufficient gains through the plotted data points, again, assuring that our interventions are working. And maybe that child doesn't need that goal anymore. But on the right-hand side, you see some kind of ups and downs, some inconsistent or insufficient data, where we can look closely, what's going on with this child? Is it a program concern? Is it an attendance issue? We need to really take a look at why we're seeing those plotted points. And to sum it up, again, in Rockville Center, we've been doing a lot of great things all these years, and I feel lucky enough to have worked in this district for a very long time. We've always had our instructional support teams intact. We've had knowledgeable, trained professionals providing reading interventions at the Tier Three level. We've always communicated with parents the needs of their children and what we're doing to support them. But we always want to grow and get better. So some immediate action steps we've taken is to align our assessment calendar, which is so important, within our building, across all of our elementary schools. Assessment protocol trainings for teachers who needed to be trained in certain benchmarking assessments, classroom teachers I want to bring up, which is so important as well. Professional learning has included, again, looking at and testing out some of these norm-referenced progress monitoring tools that I've mentioned. Long-term, as mentioned before, a master schedule with a built-in what I need now period, or an X period, where students who need that Tier Three pull-out support can get that without missing classroom instruction, so that's really important. The instructional support teams will continue to work on crafting goals, to have in a bank within the Branching Minds system that we can, that we can work on, and ongoing professional learning and the adoption of the progress monitoring tools. Thank you.
Good evening. I will close this out in a, I'll use the John Murphy word, in expedient manner. I will not speak too much. If you look, right, good word. If you look at the visual above on MTSS, that is really what you heard tonight. I just want to reiterate a couple of very important points. When you hear the word Tier One, that is for all students in the classroom. That affords our classroom teachers the opportunity to differentiate based on learning levels and learning interests, and that's something that we have done, but will continue to really focus on in the future. You know, we did a curriculum review this year, and that's always a challenging and nerve-wracking thing. You don't know what you're going to find. The good news is, we found that we're doing a lot of great things in this school district. And that makes all of us, who've been here for many years, very happy and very proud. With that being said, if you look at a year ago to now, where we've come, wow. From the ICT model to all of the committees that were formed, to the professional development, and to the leadership of our central office, we are in a different place, and we are moving forward in a really positive manner. The camaraderie in this school district, the excitement, the motivation, it's there. If you walk into any of the elementary schools, middle school and the high school as well, you will see the excitement. You know, the goal was that when they get to middle school, you wouldn't know which school the students come from. And to be honest with all of this, Ms. McGinn will not be able to say, "Covert Watson, Wilson Riverside Uit." She will have to really think about it, which is something we strive for. So we're very proud, we have, you know, a lot of great work ahead of us, but it's been an honor, after 25 years, to feel like we are really doing some wonderful things and moving forward after a couple of years of pandemic and some, you know, not-so-great things in the world, and we're very excited about that. Thank you.
Okay. First and foremost, I want to commend everyone for coming out tonight and putting together such a wonderful presentation. A couple of takeaways that I have. Number one, I think the board will recognize, like I do, how much overlap we have with a lot of our goals. So for example, you heard today about making new ELA assessments. That is also related to our ELA curriculum review, right? Trying to make, but that work supports what's going on in MTSS. Our co-teaching, our ICT model also supports all of this work. And it's about putting together systems that support continuous improvement for us as professionals, but more importantly, for students on a day-to-day basis. A couple of takeaways that I have in addition to that, this is not a one-year process. This is, this is something that we need to invest in, that the investment we make both this year and next year pays dividends, you know, down the road as that system gets better. We learn the different practices and become more familiar with the different practices. For example, I'm just thinking of data teams. The first time you're in a data team, you're not as effective as after you've been doing it for a year or two. So these are the kind of conversations that we've started this year, and I'm pleased to have such conversations with so many talented individuals. This was, you know, all of our support teachers, you heard some of the support teachers talking about how we have support teachers, but what they left out was how talented the support teachers are, and how their expertise is put to bear all the time. And I know that both Dr. Moriarty and Ms. Love join me in saying that between both the curriculum and special ed side, we've had a lot of... Now, we sought out Branching Minds to give us a model to look at, but the expertise has really helped us build the model that we have here. So, I thank all of you for the work that you've done, our principals, our teachers, Dr. Moriarty, Ms. Love, for all the work they've done in putting it together, and I'm sure we'd be happy to take any questions from the board.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here and for sharing your work this year. And I just, Mr. Gavin, if you could explain just a brief synopsis of the Branching Minds system, understanding that we'll be continuing to use it moving forward, just so the community can understand?
Sure. It's a software platform. It's web-based, and it allows us to put in information about the students, including their plans, and then putting different data points in. So, for example, let's say they had a foundations assessment, and they scored a nine, or, you know, whatever, 90% on their foundations assessment. We would put in 90%. If their goal over time was to get to 95% on a particular skill, we'd be able, that's what those lines were in that one slide, you'd be able to see how those students track over time, what their expected growth would be based on what our goals are and how much time we have. That's the other really important component. Let's say we're working on a goal over three months, and the goal is to go from 80% to 90%. They're going to give you a line and a trajectory for how to meet that goal within that time. So, that's something that that software does really well, and it's something that allows us also to have articulation between and among buildings if a student moves or changed schools or goes up to the middle school, you know, after fifth grade. So, that's, Dr. Moriarty, am I missing anything with that?
No. It's really about ensuring that we have a plan in place, the goals are assigned and aligned to all the teachers working with, so everything, Mr. Gavin said, and just this other part about aligning those goals and ensuring that every teacher who works with that child knows what that goal is, is assigned to that goal, knows what the intervention is, and whenever they're working with that child, it could be in a small group reading, but they have a goal around phonics, they're able to bring in the concepts and the strategies that they're working on, and they're seeing this consistency of the intervention or instruction. And everybody will be able to speak to what that child is working on, where they're going, how they're getting there, and then we'll be able to sit and analyze, have they gotten there? And if not, what are we going to do about it?
Right. I think, you know, to follow up on Dr. Moriarty's comment, one of the things, one of the last slides said the power of "we," like the team-based approach. In almost all the goals that you've seen here this year, we've talked about team-based approaches on everything and how we build systems for continual improvement. And this is another system that supports that. So, the idea that having everyone, I thank you for reminding me that, the idea of having everyone on the same page with the same plan is really important, particularly as students go through, and they might have a speech teacher that's working on something. So, the coordination of effort and the targeting of effort, I think, is really important.
Great. Thank you. I'm happy to see, as in other presentations, more alignment across the five elementaries that we've been talking about all of school year, as well as increased opportunities for communication with parents, especially at the Tier Two and Tier Three levels. So, thank you. Any comments or questions from board members?
Sure. I feel like Mr. Raymar kind of stole a lot of what I was going to say, so be echoing his sentiments.
He does that a lot.
It's all right. Great minds think alike. I'd like to sincerely thank this administration and this whole team for investing their time, effort, and resources into moving this work. The transition to MTSS is something that I had asked for last year and was told by a previous administration that it was not a state requirement. But it is best practice, and your commitment to doing this work is a tremendous testament to this administration and our staff's dedication to best practice. So, thank you for putting in the time and the effort. As Mr. Raymar had kind of ended with, I think it's important that the community understands that MTSS is for all students, and it's really there to ensure that all students are able to thrive in the least restrictive environment in the classroom. It incorporates best practices, not just in knowledge, but also in the skills of the content areas. And more importantly, at the secondary where I live, I think it keeps a lot of kids out of having to go into support classes, so they're able to stay in their classroom and then enjoy all of the amazing electives that we have to offer them. Again, the transition is no small task, and I really appreciate the work. The only real question I had was surrounding parent involvement. How are we planning on providing parents and families in this process? And are we developing any resources that they can use at home to support their learner?
So, this is an ongoing process, and even though the committee has kind of finalized their findings for this year and the work for this year, this committee is going to continue moving forward. So, at our last meeting, we did, there was a subcommittee within our committee that was talking about parental communication and the letters and what those letters should look like, and there's a whole bunch of questions that we, as a committee, are sitting with still and still trying to digest and figure out the best system that won't be overwhelming to parents, also won't be scary. You know, sometimes getting that letter, you don't know what's going on and why that's happening. So, we want to make sure that we're very tactful in what we're doing and that it is informative and at the same time, being as supportive as we possibly can. So, at this moment in time, we're still working on that, but a part of, not but, and, a part of the MTSS structure, as you know, and we should definitely share with the community, is that parents are involved in this from the very beginning. And I know that that has been something that has been foundational here at Rockville Center, that the teachers and support staff and service providers are working with the teacher, working with the parents very closely. Now, it's talking about how can we really streamline that? How can we have, you know, very specific communication? At what points are we bringing parents in? So, all of these questions are at the forefront of what we're thinking about, and we hope to be able to report out more on MTSS next year if that is, you know, if we afforded the opportunity to do so. So, thank you for keeping that at the forefront of our mind, because it is exactly what we've been thinking about as well.
Great. Thank you so much, again, to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Since it is teacher and principal appreciation days that we've had, I can't thank you all enough for the work that you've done. I think there should be a shout-out to our assistant soup's who have put this together as well. The things that I like the most about it, besides Ms. Love's garden, which I just liked your analogy, the way you phrased it, is better than my pool when I ask for these kinds of things. Shows the difference between the way we are, I'm a sinking pool person, and you're a garden growing person. So, that's good. I do think the things that made the most sense to me as a parent is the uniform assessments, norm-referenced benchmarks. These are things that we've heard repeatedly over the years that parents were craving, that most kids will be in the classroom with the least restrictive model and that there's a fluidity between the tiers. So, your child might at one point be in Tier Two, need more help, and then move out of that. And I think a lot of parents have expressed over the years how difficult it was with the old AIS model, that if your child is pulled out, they're missing instruction, then it becomes more difficult for that classroom teacher to catch a child up who may have needs because they've missed to be pulled out for something else. So, I just, this model just seems much more beneficial to children. One question I had, like, from a parent's lens, the ICT model is going on every day with the co-teaching, and then this is being woven into that? That's how this works? From a parent perspective and not an educator, I'm thinking there's all of these things going on.
We're just looking at each other. Who's going to answer the question? Because we both want to jump in. So, I'm going to, Jeannie, I think, should answer this one.
So, because the interventionist is pushing into the general ed class, we talk, when we're talking about it among ourselves, we start calling it ICT, but, so we're trying to delineate it by calling, you know, ICT is the special education program, but when we're providing intervention support in the general ed class, maybe we could refer to that as team teaching. But we could still use the models, because from an instructional and research standpoint, that's the best way to deliver, for two people to deliver instruction to a group of students. And so, it will look, it could look similar in some ways, and then in other ways, it might look a little bit different based on the needs of the kids, which is really what it comes down to. The difference is with integrated coaching is that that special education teacher is also gearing their, there's like another level of instruction, because the children have goals on an IEP that we have to address and we have to collect data on. So, it's a different model in that sense. But because the practice behind it is so good, that's really where this notion of why are we pulling kids out of class? For the exact reason you just said, we could apply these great practices when we're providing interventions instead of pulling them out to provide interventions. So, where it's similar, there is a little, you know, a difference there. It's also really important to note that the data that will yield from this, if a student should be, for example, considered for special education and referred for testing, we're really looking at growth data specific to that student, so that if we are testing a student and possibly classifying them and then providing special education services, it's based on data, it's based on data specific to them, and really identifying what their needs are. And that's really, really important, because where we want to identify students for special education who need it, we also want to preserve students' ability to stay in general education. And sometimes where we worry, the data shows us we're worried more than there actually is an issue, and sometimes vice versa. Sometimes a student can look like they're very content and doing well, and then we realize, you know what, when we're looking at data, the data shows us that they need a little bit more support. So, for all these reasons, it's wonderful for general ed and for special ed, the MTSS model.
Thank you for clarifying that, and thank you all for everything you did to make it work, because it wasn't easy. So, we appreciate it.
Thank you as well. I love a good committee. I really do. I get excited about committees. So, thank you. It's a great committee. And I love that we're looking at all students and we're using data, and it's all the things that we've promised our parents that we would use. It also has to make it easier for you as educators to take the subjectivity out of it. You can trust results, and you don't have to feel that, am I doing right by this child? I mean, that's a lot of pressure for an educator, and we appreciate that, that we understand that you take that on with all of our children every day. So, I like this for you, too, as much as I like it for our students. I think it's a fair process. I am curious as to what makes that 80%? How do we see that? So, I understand why it's to the 80, because we have to have some benchmark of what to move forward with, but I'm just curious as to how we get to the 80% and what informs that.
So, when you say 80%, Ms. Broderick talked about testing our Core One instruction.
Right. Yep.
And, so in other words, if we're teaching a unit on something and we find out that half of our students failed the test, then something went wrong there. So, that means that we had either an issue with content, we had an issue with delivery, we had an issue with something. So, that's the benchmark number that we're going to use to make sure that the instruction that we're delivering, the content that we're doing, is effective.
So, we're doing that on every unit level? So, you're...
And looking for trends over time.
Okay.
So, perhaps one unit with fractions, there could be an issue, and we could, we'll look into that with the team. But if we're seeing two, three scores in a row from a whole class, not one student, but 80, 75% of the students didn't do well on the test, then we have an issue here.
Okay.
And we're just looking to improve ourselves, improve the instruction, and figure out why it is that so many kids didn't do well. And there's a million different reasons for it, and we just have to be open for all the different possibilities and changing what we do.
I didn't know if it also included NWEA data. So, if something was timed kind of around that assessment, if that 80% also was picked up. So, if you're looking, you know, when you kind of break down NWEA and you see the different categories, you know, are you also looking at 80% of our students are not doing well in reading comprehension on NWEA? Is that also a factor, or is it just unit tests?
It could be. In general, our NWEA scores, which are nationally normed, we do significantly better than national averages.
Yep.
And that's probably not something we would dive into for, we could dive into it for a classroom. A lot of times, we're using that more for individual students, and we're looking at the unit assessments, foundations, benchmarks, things like that for the whole class.
Okay.
So, a real easy example is second grade does foundations. Every couple of weeks, they're doing a foundations assessment, and right on our Excel sheets, we see who got 100, who got a 90, who got in the 80s. We can chart those very easily, and if you had Google Sheets PD, you'll know how to color-code that and everything.
[laughing]
And you'll see, if you have 20 students and three of them fell below 80%, then you still have a healthy core or healthy instruction that was delivered. But if you have six, seven kids who didn't meet that benchmark, then we have to do a reteach, or we might start wondering why, and maybe students were absent, maybe there was bad practice, or maybe we didn't deliver the instruction properly.
That's fantastic. Honestly, I think that's amazing. Thank you for clarifying. I was curious. My other question was about kindergarten screening. So, we're doing such a great job doing this universal screening for all students, and I'm wondering if any of your kind of work here has informed, you know, or had a conversation going about, well, maybe we should be doing our kindergarten screening differently, or maybe this would be a good component to bring into kindergarten screening? Just kind of wondering how we, now that we are a pre-K district and we're getting more intel on our students earlier, for those that do use our universal pre-K, are we able to kind of take some of this and stretch it down to our younger people?
So, it's a two-part, two-part answer. Just going back to the 80%, that's not necessarily a number we chose.
Yes, I figured.
Right? So, just research-based, that would be the number that would be used across the board in most districts, and it's also what we use when we're analyzing testing for students. But to your question, so when students are coming in, we give something called a dial right now, which touches on different areas of development. And when students come in for their kindergarten screening, we give them that, and if there are any students that there's concern, they talk with the parent, they'll let us know in our office, and then sometimes it's very much a borderline situation where we know that there are students we're going to screen when they come into kindergarten, because we have building, all of these building-level services. So, as we move forward, if we're able, you know, if we, when we're looking at the data, if we feel that we need to add assessments, we can. But right now, that is the standard for kindergarten. That's what we're using, that's what we just used for the class coming in, but we may add to that down the road.
Great.
But we are doing something now that's what we're using.
Great. Thank you. Those were my questions, and again, I just think it's a great way to make sure that we have consistency. I love that you're using so much data, and I really do feel like every child's being really looked at and cared for in this district. Thank you for everything you do.
Agreed. Thank you for making what can sound like very sort of educational-heavy jargon, terminology, RTI, MTSS, much more understandable in terms of identifying students and building a support team around them in different tiers. So, thank you for that. I wonder, from a parent perspective, here we are in May, looking towards June, the kind of feeling that my child, my student, might finally be in a great place, and, oh no, we're going to start over again in September. It sounds like much of the instructional team, even though the classroom teacher might change, many members of the team remain the same.
Yes.
And so, there's a sort of reassurance, not just in the software, but also in the personnel.
So, right.
And how the students are tracked now through Branching Minds, that will follow the student from kindergarten all the way up through high school. So, that's another nice element that the incoming classroom teachers can see and have documented, classroom unit assessments along with the bigger benchmarks like the NWEA.
Right.
So, I think one of our long-term goals could be a mindset, like, shift or paradigm shift in that it's not, we're never finite, we're never done, we're continually growing, and our goals are going to continually stretch us to continue to grow, right? So, we should always be kind of working on that edge of our performance zone. You know, we don't want to just be where we're comfortable, we want to keep going and moving and working at our correct level of difficulty. So, when we think about MTSS, we want to be thinking about our core instruction is paramount, and then with that, how are we setting goals and continually moving our learners across that learning journey in everything that they're doing, and constantly cultivating those skills, and constantly engaging in deliberate practice around all of the skills that are necessary for us to thrive in school and outside of school now in our current state and what we will one day become, and we will continue to evolve and become, right? So, that's the difference, that's part of the difference between RTI and MTSS, is it's not that you're in and then you're done, and then you're out, and then you're, it's this fluid movement between the tiers, and you get exactly what you need when you need it, and you have a team, problem-based approach that's solution-oriented.
I'd also mention, for any parents listening, really take comfort in knowing, like I'm looking at in the audience at all of the people here tonight who know the children in their building. They know the services they're getting, they know their strengths, they know their areas they need to work on. And even though we're working on this and we're in this place in the process of developing our MTSS plan, right now, your students are in wonderful hands, and your principals know your children, they know what their needs are, the teachers do, and just because they're going to a new grade with a new teacher, when we have IST meetings, and these are held in the building, many of the same support staff is there, and they know these students. You can have a meeting on a fourth grader, and they're talking about where this child was, and I know I see Darren nodding and Michelle nodding, they know where this child was in kindergarten, in first grade, in second grade, they can tell you stories about what happened in second grade in the child's life, because that's how well they know the child. And now they're in fourth grade, and so their whole journey... second grade. They can tell you stories about what happened in second grade in the child's life, because that's how well they know the child. And now they're in fourth grade, and so their whole journey is shared and known by the people who work with them, the people here tonight especially, who are the specialists in the building and the building administrators. So even though we're working on this, just know that that's who your children are with every day. And I admire all of you, really. It's wonderful.
I think that's an important balance between that personal attention, that feeling that you know my child, but there's also a systemic approach too, right? So it's a balance of both. And on that note of balance, I wonder, and maybe this was a committee conversation maybe early on, how do you balance that sort of response and flexibility to the child and the learning environment with the progress monitoring and the required testing, right? So how do you balance not over-testing a child and making sure that you are providing the robust instruction without taking time away for constant testing?
Right. So when we think about progress monitoring and we think about analyzing that data, we want to also visualize that this is happening in a very organic setting. It's not like a paper and pencil test where you're sitting down and it's, you know, an hour long. They're very quick, they're very fast. Michelle, would you like to share?
[inaudible]
Just, yes, do you mind? Thank you.
Yep, go to the mic, please.
So it's very quick, it's very fast, and it's very organic, and Michelle was best.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked this, because many of our progress monitoring tools are literally one-minute timings. So if I'm looking at a student I'm working with and I have a decoding goal and a fluency goal, I may pull out my word ID sheet, a one-minute timer goes on, I'm tracking how many words that child can read in one minute, I'm done. Then I go to oral reading fluency, and I take out a passage, and I'm going to time you again for a minute and see how many words per minute you read within that passage. It's quick, it's fast, it's within the time constraint of that period that I work with that child. So again, I'm glad it's not these intensive 30- to 40-minute period progress monitors, so.
And it's also age-appropriate, right? So as we talked about, for younger students, we want to make sure that the assessment feels natural as part of instruction, and we want to make sure that it's skill-based. So if they have a goal and a specific skill, we're testing that specific thing. So there might be a couple of questions on something, as opposed to like a unit test that might be used overall to see how their progress is and through the entirety of the unit in the context of Tier One, right? So everyone in Tier One takes the unit assessment, we evaluate Tier One in that child versus the 80% there. But we also then say, okay, here are the three skills that we want to work on, or the two skills that we want to work on, we're all working on them. And then we determine which one of our support providers does those specific assessments and does it naturally in the context of instruction.
Thank you.
Thank you again so much for being here. All right, we're moving on C-Policies. At Stage One, we have 6150, Alcohol, Drugs, and Other Substances. There are a couple of linguistic challenges, changes rather, from our last meeting added. Any board members have comments or questions on 6150? Just thank you for adding. Thank you for the addition.
Yes, agreed. That's clear.
Is everyone okay with the updated changes on that? Move it forward? Yes. 6151, Drug-Free Workplace, also at Stage One. Any comments or questions? Okay to move this one forward? Yes. At Stage Two, we have 3210, Visitors to the School. Okay to move this? Yes. At Stage Three, we have 2310, Attendance by Board Members at Conferences, Conventions, and Workshops. Can we move this to approval?
Yes.
At the next meeting? 3240, Dissemination of Information Through Students. Okay to move this to approval? Yes. 4110, Administrative Personnel. Okay to move this as well? Yes. Thank you. And 4240, Administrative Latitude and the Absence of Board Policy. Okay to move this as well? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Opportunity for Superintendent, Mr. Gavin.
Thank you. I wanted to inform the public that this year, we have reinstated the traditional scoring policy of counting New York State's Regents for 10% of the final course grade for all courses ending in a Regents exam. For the last few years, the pandemic made this policy unwise, as our instruction was interrupted or the exam just was not given. This year, we feel confident that our instruction in all of our courses and buildings has been uninterrupted, and we can return, as most other high schools in Long Island have, to a policy of counting the Regents in the final grade. As 10% of the grade, it basically counts for two tests in a quarter. Teachers shared this information with parents at the back-to-school night in September, and the information was also included in the course syllabus. I wanted to tell the board that we'll be sending out this information later again this week to make sure parents understand. I can tell you that the inclusion of the reading exam scores and the calculation of the final course grade is a decision made by individual schools, school districts, and it can vary from district to district. Including the Regents score in 10% of the final grade is in line with most of Nassau County districts, and it also is in line with our other courses that don't end in a Regents but have a final. So that final typically, it counts for 10%. Regarding the inclusion of the Regents scores on transcripts, it is accurate that we've been discussing whether or not the transcripts will be included on, the scores will be included on the transcripts for our current juniors, not our seniors, but our current juniors. In speaking with other districts and working with college admission representatives, Southside has decided to return to including Regents scores on the transcript in order to provide our students with a more comprehensive view of their academic achievements and to help them in the college process. It is worth noting that including Regents scores on transcripts is a common practice across high schools in New York State, and that our Guidance Department has been getting questions as to why they haven't been included in the last few years. Not all colleges look at the scores, but a lot of colleges in New York will ask if they are not included. With regard to the benefit to students of having the Regents exam scores printed on the transcripts, it can provide colleges and universities with an additional data point to evaluate students' academic performance. It's election season, and it's my first experience with elections here in Rockville Center. I wanted to remind everyone that not everything found on the Internet is true. This past week, I've had many conversations with residents trying to find out the truth of rumors posted on the Internet. I applaud those residents for taking the time to seek out accurate information from district representatives. I would encourage our parents and residents to do the same. When something seems outlandish, or false, or outside the realm of common sense, 99% of the time, it is. Call me, I encourage you to call me, call our building principals, call Dr. Moriarty, Ms. Love, Mr. Murphy, or Mr. Bartels. We will provide you with accurate information while preserving any student's right to privacy. That I promise. Anyone that has met with me, I have done so and been able to clarify their questions. The district, this district continues to be transparent in the work that we do and the decisions that we make. The district supports all of our students and continues to make sure that our parents are partners in supporting students. That is why, to date, we have given a stakeholder survey, attended parent meetings, held elementary and secondary parent universities, collaborated and decided on board norms, established board goals, and publicly reported on all of it. So I just wanted to thank everyone for that and just give everyone the reminder that if you have a question, ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Opportunity for Board Members, Mrs. Messier.
Sure. Congratulations to the cast and crew of You're in Town for an incredible performance this past weekend. From the acting, to the sets, to the music, to the stage management, your talent, effort, and dedication are unparalleled. Good luck to the cast and crew of Shrek Jr., which will be performed at the middle school over the next few days. I'm looking very forward to seeing their performance. I'd like to wish a belated Happy Principal's Appreciation Day to all of our principals, Mr. Raymar, Mrs. Pike, Mr. Walter, Mrs. Paschrell, and Mr. Duffy, Ms. McGinn, and Mr. Walsh, as well as all of our assistant principals, Mrs. LaSorsa, Mr. Wiesenberg, Ms. Green, Ms. Nisselcross, Mr. Rosenthal, and Mr. Moss. Thank you for all that you do for our children and to support your respective staffs. I'd also like to wish all of our teachers a Happy Teacher Appreciation Day. Our teachers are the foundation of our school system. They inspire, motivate, and challenge our children to think critically, ask questions, and pursue their passions. They help our children grow as individuals and empower them to reach their full potential. I would like to express my heartfelt appreciation to all of our teachers for all that they do every single day. Thank you for your unwavering commitment to our children. Finally, not finally, almost finally, thank you to the Rockville Center Council of PTAs led by Heather Teta and Jackie Callahan, as well as the League of Women Voters for organizing the Board of Education Candidates Forum last night. The forum is such an important event, and I wish all of the candidates the best of luck. Finally, I would again like to thank Mr. Bartels for his work on this year's budget. It's a true testament to our district goals aligned with our district mission and will ensure that all of our students have access to programs and resources necessary to reach their respective potentials. I would like to conclude by reminding the members of our community that the budget vote and Board of Ed elections will take place on May 17th at Southside High School.
Sixteenth.
Thank you. Sixteenth, sorry. May 16th. Shameless plug that I messed up. Sorry. May 16th, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Farazani?
I also would like to congratulate the cast, crew, and everyone who worked on You're in Town, Ms. Sidemen, Dr. Freiling, and Ms. Mark, and the sponsors for the arts that fed the children every single night during Tech Week, which was fun, and I did enjoy it. I want to congratulate the cast of Shrek Jr., and I hope they have a, I guess you have to say, Break the Leg next week. I want to congratulate John and Ray for all they did. It's amazing to see what can be done when people are trained and they are willing to jump into action to help others. I did want to say that for Teacher's Appreciation Day, I think I said this a couple of years ago, I am still very close to two of my grammar school teachers, and they are the people who encouraged me to be the person that I am and go to school for what I went to school for, and made a huge difference in my childhood. And I say to Sister Barbara all the time, and I hope she understands how much I appreciate it, that as a little kid, I hated to read out loud. I hated public speaking. I had an astigmatism, and I used to skip lines when I read, and she forced me to do it, and I despised her at the time for it, but I appreciate it now. And I do appreciate every teacher in the district and all you do for our kids every day. And believe me, even when people are adults, they remember you. And thank you to all our principals. You're wonderful, and without your support, we couldn't do what we do every day. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Mrs. Hackett?
I echo how many wonderful people are in this district, and also congratulate and thank Ray and John. They make us really proud, and they're just a microcosm of the amazing people that we have in this district, and they're always willing to help and do what's right by everybody around them. So thank you to them. Yes, to the principals and teachers, these are our children's second family, to be honest. I feel like they're helping us all raise our kids in this town. They are their trusted adults. They do phenomenal work, and we are grateful for them every single day. It's just the time we get to highlight them. For all these little national holidays and things, I think this one is probably my favorite, it's the most special time. The cast of You're in Town and crew, I loved the set, the music, the acting. I was laughing. I felt like I was really at a Broadway production. They were fantastic. And I love that the audience was just having a really good time there. They did a great job. So thank you to them, and good luck to Shrek. Dr. Downing and I went to the art show at the library the other day, and if you have a chance during the month of May, please pop over. I realized when I got close to it that it was going to be crowded, and boy, was it ever. They had it beautifully done. But our students are just so talented, and it made me so happy as, I was telling Dr. Zouar, that when I was a student and I was in high school, I thought about being an art student, and I was dissuaded from that because there wasn't money in art. And I think it's just such a different world, and I'm so happy to watch these students be part of this world, where people like Dr. Zouar and our teachers are telling them, yes, you can do this, pursue it, we'll look at, we're going to celebrate it. We're not telling you to suppress this, we're telling you to celebrate this. And that made me so happy. We saw our students were down in Orlando for DECA, also another group that we're so proud of and have been doing amazing things. One other thing that was so fun was May 1st and watching all the commitments that students have made to their colleges and their futures. I work at a college, and it was just a fun time for us as well, see all of our new faces coming in, and all the students that were posting on our pages that they were coming to us, and they were excited. I wish all the students a very good concert season, which is coming up. I don't know if we'll, we had one the other night, Mr. Gavin, right?
Yep.
Wilson already.
Wilson, and Crocodile Rock.
Yes, yes, that's right. So congratulations to them. I'm going to do a shameless plug for the Wellness Walk, which is on May 13th. It's from 10:00 to 12:00 at the middle school. Mrs. Love and her team have been working really, really hard on that, Mrs. Kabas, Mrs. Brenner. We have just a great team here working on that. So come down. We have lots of fun things happening there. And I'd also like to thank the League of Women's Voters, our PTA Council, and our Current Events Club for running last night's candidate forum, specifically Marlene Alborano, Jackie Cahalan, and Heather Teta, who, two of you are here. Thank you very much. And I just really have to say, the students from the Current Events Club just were fantastic. They became professional. They were wonderful, and I really think they deserve a shout-out for the work that they did last night. We talked about our civic readiness program recently, and this was just like the perfect marriage of how can we involve them in what we're doing in Board of Ed. So for me personally, that was the highlight of my night, watching them be part of it, and I appreciated that you involved them, and I thought that was just a great thing, and I hope we could do that more. So thank you to the young students that helped us out, and I hope everybody has a nice Mother's Day. We won't see you until after that, so Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you. Dr. Downing?
Thank you. Thank you to Ms. Love, Dr. Moriarty, and our teachers for all that information about the multi-tiered systems of support. I believe these systems are having an immediate and beneficial impact on our students' education, and the more parents and families understand the process, the more prepared they are to engage with their students at the end of the school day and to know who to contact with questions. So thank you. Thanks also to PTA Council and the students who worked the candidates forum last night. I certainly encourage everyone to watch the recording and make an informed choice on May 16th. May is Mental Health Awareness Month, but really, every month should be Mental Health Awareness Month, whether you're a student, or a parent, or a family member, or a teacher, or staff in our school community. To stay mentally healthy, we all must feel a sense of belonging and safety. So on that note, please do attend the Wellness Walk on May 13th. Watch the Wellness Minutes. They're on the district YouTube channel. Thank you to Ms. Love for putting those programs together. And I think one of the ways we all build resilience is by encouraging our students to build on their strengths, to find these creative outlets, these passions. And we, this is our job, to find ways to continue to offer more choices, electives, teams, extracurriculars, all of these opportunities for our students. I echo the congratulations to the cast, crew, pit band of the High School Musical. It's too bad you missed the Tony cutoff, because you absolutely should have been included. Shrek Jr. at the middle school this weekend, Break a Leg, and also to all the musicians. As you noted, spring concert season is well underway. The Student Art Show, what a great example of a partnership between the schools, the library, the village, and our students and families. More of that, please. Happy Teacher-Principal Appreciation Day. Thank you to all of the teachers who went above and beyond to present at the Secondary Parent University workshops, near and dear to my heart. Again, the more we offer these opportunities to parents, the better informed everyone can be about what that educational future looks like for our students of any age. Thank you again to Mr. Bartels for your work on the budget, and please remember to come out and vote, May 16th.
Thank you. I'll echo the congratulations to the cast and crew of You're in Town, and best of luck to our Shrek Jr. cast and crew this weekend. Thank you to the PTAs for hosting the board members and administrators for our budget roadshows throughout the month of April. And thank you again for everyone that organized the parent university. The Secondary Parent University was very informative. All of our principals and teachers, we appreciate you. I think you've heard that across the board here, so thank you very much for all the work you do every single day. And Happy Mother's Day to all of our moms. Okay, opportunity for board members, or sorry, visitors. "The public in its comments is requested to refrain from making any direct references to students or staff members that could be considered critical of their performance or their character. Such references to individual students or staff members are inappropriate in a public forum and should instead be conducted in private conversation with appropriate members of the staff. When you come to the mic, please state your name and address. Keep your comments to three minutes. Remember that you're addressing the board as a whole and not any individual board member."
Good evening. Jeff Greenfield, Citizen Taxpayer. As I did last time, I'll give my questions first and then hopefully answers. What's the balance in the fund reserve after the allocation for this year? When are the absentee ballots being mailed? I want to share with the superintendent, because I heard last night about transparency and disclosure, tonight's Lynbrook School Board meeting, what their public, what they put on their website for the agenda is much more detailed than what we put out. And I think we would gain by giving the public more information. Thank you to security for tonight. Last night, we could have used security, and that was unfortunate that we didn't have it in the room. And that was unfortunate that we didn't have it in the room. How much are we budgeting for a security chief? And there's great interest in this year's election and great comments last night from all. I think we should explore, like I've advocated, increasing the board to seven, like other districts around us. At the state aid, is it the same as was in the proposed budget, in the budget that was finalized? And last, I can't thank people by name, but I think, I don't want to violate anything. The people that made the very nice presentation tonight should have introduced themselves with their name. The only one I knew was the most famous principal in the district. Just ask him, he'll tell you. Those are my seven questions. Last month, it was four.
Okay.
Under three minutes.
You're good.
Thank you.
You're good under three minutes.
I'm practicing for you.
Appreciate it.
Definitely, definitely hit the three-minute mark. I'll let Robert talk about the fund balance and I'll let Robert talk about the state aid runs. But I will address the budget for the security chief. We moved over $210,000 for additional security procedures. In that, that would be one of the pockets of money that we would draw the security chief. Right now, we don't have a set salary on that because we're exploring different options for how we hire. Some districts hire it as a direct hire, some districts hire through a security company. So Mr. Murphy and I have been meeting with different companies and different individuals to try to figure out what's best that fits for us in terms of salary and also in terms of expertise. In terms of the absentee ballots, when are they mailed out again?
They actually, the sick and disabled list has already been mailed. If anybody has applied for an absentee ballot and I've received it, I've processed that and they've been mailed.
I'll put my wife on alert. She's waiting for a granddaughter and an absentee ballot.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
Granddaughters, very important, very important. In terms of the fund balance, Robert, do you want to talk a little bit about the fund balance and the state aid, the final state aid runs?
Sure. Fund balance, we ended up last year with about 15 million in total fund balance. Some of that is reserved, some is unreserved. After the two and a half million, we should have about 12 and a half left. However, I am projecting another increase in our fund balance at the end of this school year. So that's kind of where the numbers fall.
Does that put us in good range for our bond rating for?
Yeah, we are still above where we had been over the previous 10 years. So that 12 and a half million, we had been running somewhere around 10 million before COVID and so forth. So that 12 and a half, we're still in good shape.
So it won't hurt our future borrowing bond rating. Thank you.
The state aid, we're down about 100,000 in the foundation aid. But other than that, we had expected there may be some play in there. So we are fully funded for our budget. It does not impact the budget.
I just want to know when the state officials send out the postcard, patting themselves on the back, if it's really true, the numbers that they promote.
Nope, they are so far.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The other thing I just wanted to follow up for the board, in the budget, they have taken off the restriction on how we use foundation aid. So that was one of the things that Mr. Bartels included in several presentations in the past, but that restriction is gone. So we're free to use the foundation aid as we so choose.
Thank you. You can give Mrs. Celebrity. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the receipt of financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve items for actions one through seven?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. We'll see you at the budget vote on May 16th.